Okay, welcome back, everybody. We're gonna come back into session. This is the briefing for August 30th. We're moving into support services with Frank Pinter.
Thank you, commissioners. The first item we have is a request for appointments to the Veterans Advisory Board. Diane?
Good morning, commissioners. So I have two items for the Veterans Advisory Board. One is there's two positions the county appoints you on that board. One is filled by Dan Ditmer and he would like to be reappointed. And then the other position is vacant and we have two applicants Pamela Stevens Perez and David Card. So I'd like to know if you're good with reappointing Dan Ditmer and then do you want to interview the two applicants? Or do you want to just select?
I would be good in our reappointing Dan and then interviewing both of them. They both sound like, you know, I don't, I don't know either one of them that well or at all. And so I think it would be good for us to meet him or meet them.
I agree as well with both of those.
Okay, and then also the Veterans Advisory Board has recommended we do an amendment to the Veterans Assistance Policy so that it includes the different documents that will show proof of service. So you're good with that amendment?
Yes.
Yes.
I am.
Okay, and then the next item is a report on the tax title sale and McKenzie I think has that ready to go.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
So we had a tax title auction on July night and then a second one July 23rd. Thirty tax title parcels were put up for auction on bidforassets.com. Twenty-seven parcels sold. One parcel was pulled for consideration of a separate sale to the Skokomish Tribe. Two didn't sell. The total minimum bid was one hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. The total winning bids equal three hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars. Of the two parcels that didn't sell, one has an outstanding lien from the Health Department and the other is a ten-foot strip of land that intersects another parcel. So the recommendation for that, for the parcel with the outstanding lien, I guess that's a pretty big deterrent to purchasers. So we were hoping to work with the Health Department to release that lien. I'm gonna have to get ahold of them. I'm not sure what all that entails. And then for the other parcel, I was gonna try to reach out to the property owner that it intersects and see if maybe they would be interested in purchasing it.
I think those are wise, wise moves.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
All right, and I know that the Excel spreadsheet in the packet is very tiny, so I can absolutely email that over to you guys.
I for one would appreciate it. Was I holding it up that close? Is that what called attention? Man, these are tiny.
Right, right, trying to fit that all on one page, even when it was the bigger sized paper, it was still this small. So I was like, well, I'll just email it over.
Sounds good.
So the next item we have commissioners is an agreement that the City of Shelton has requested the county sign in regards to the permitting process for the civil and landscaping for Building 10, which is the final completion in order to get the permanent certificate of occupancy. We've already done all of the work as far as permitting and contracting and the change order to purchase the additional cost of the civil. This is a requirement that the city has put in front of the commission as owners of those properties to maintain the stormwater system that's on that property. In other words, they've asked us to sign to commit that annually we will do certain things to that parcel, keeping the scuppers clean, keeping the pipelines clean, keeping the the leaves out of the stormwater system. They estimated about two thousand dollars a year of annual maintenance by our Facilities Department. Kelly and I looked at it. It's probably closer to about three thousand. But basically what it is, is a commitment by the owners of that property to maintain the stormwater system on parcel that Building 10 is located on.
Is this anything different than they expect of others?
No.
Does that make you feel any better or worse, Commissioner?
That's a great question, and I don't, I think I won't answer it. So are we okay with moving forward on this?
I am.
Okay, go ahead, Frank.
Thank you.
Next time. Sometimes Commissioner Shutey, it may sound like a feather coming in, but it's a big hammer that hits.
I thought you were gonna say that's a lot of poppycock.
So the next item we have is an agreement to purchase sixteen point two acre parcel of property that is currently owned by PUD three. It's parcel number four two zero zero four dash four zero dash zero 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 zero. It's for three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. It would be purchased out of REIT one funds and it is for the purpose of storing county archiving documents, possible facility substation, evidence storage, and the future location of a county jail.
I myself, I'm very much in favor of this. I'd like that if we decide to do this, and we all know I'm a tight one, but I just wanna go ahead and move forward if we have the opportunity. But can you please look and see, I'm looking at an aerial, there's a road that comes around to the back of it. Could you find out whether or not we have easement on that access back there?
Definitely I can find out.
I think it's a good decision to make. I think it's a good positive purchase, I guess.
Yeah, I agree as well. I think that it gives the county a lot of options, both now and in the future as we address needs a little bit more broadly. So definitely in support.
Okay, I will take a look at that easement, get back to the board in regards to that and then make a final decision once we bring it back to the board. Unless you're okay with me moving forward with the actual outright purchase.
I'm okay with moving forward, commissioners.
Same, yeah.
Okay, and then I'll report back on that easement.
Thank you.
Next item we have is, this is a sale of tax title parcel number four two one one zero dash four one dash zero 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 one one to the Skokomish Tribe. And I'm requesting to place on the rest, on the resolution of September fourteenth, I'm sorry, to place on the agenda a public hearing for the sale of property on September fourteenth action agenda.
Excuse me, no, this is one that we didn't, it's tax title, so we did need to have a hearing. We can actually put the resolution to sell it on the fourteenth agenda.
I'm sorry, that's right, cuz we, that's correct.
I'd like to move forward with that.
Same.
Good. And then just to go back a little bit to on that PUD parcel, the one that we're buying, we do have a resolution for that. So do you want that on the fourteenth agenda or do you wanna amend tomorrow's agenda?
How urgent is it to get it on the agenda for tomorrow?
No urgency, yeah. We're, we're actually moving it forward just by doing what we're doing. Other than that, it would have been two weeks after that, after the next time it went through. So I think just putting it on the next agenda is probably proper. It'll give people an opportunity to comment if they want.
I agree with that.
Okay, and then the building and stormwater agreement on the fourteenth or tomorrow, I just wanted to clarify.
Is it time sensitive, Frank?
Yes, it is.
Let's, let's go ahead and put it on for tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, no, excuse me, I'm sorry. Sharon, Kevin, you agree?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, when I say these things, I just mean my opinion. I gotta learn to say that beforehand. Go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you. And the next item we have is the results of the lobbyist RFP. This is an opportunity for the commissioners to discuss their review of the RFP for lobbying services and to either request a interview of two finalists or one or make a decision in regards to a lobbyist.
Well, I'm gonna speak first on this one. I've done the research and looked at them. Here's the issue that I have. I think they're all very close, but the truth matter is this commission has sitting on it a very special opportunity with knowledge that others would not have, including myself. We have two that have been legislative aides actually in there. They know which ones internally are more effective than others regardless of what something says on paper. So I actually am hoping that you two can come to consensus and we can move forward and we can empower all the knowledge you guys have already earned over the years.
Well, I'll, I'll jump first. All three of them, I've worked with all three of them. All three of them are amazing. And I think that they would all do a really good job. I didn't go through and score them. But what I did is, is I picked the one that I thought would be the best and had the best ties with Mason County. And that would be Deborah Mangia. She, I'm reading her cover letter and having worked with her in the past, I think she would do an amazing job.
Kevin?
Yeah, so similar to Commissioner Trask, had an opportunity to work with all three of the respondents that we had. I agree that the Deb is probably in a great position to represent Mason County and that's not to take anything away from the other applicants who also made very strong proposals. But yeah, I would, I would be in support of moving forward with Devon via and just you know, getting that on board and, and starting as soon as we can.
So Frank, you have three. Let's move forward with that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, commissioners. What else you got?
Last item is a request to approve a subscriber's agreement for public safety testing. It's our mechanism for testing entry level law enforcement and corrections officers. We have been doing this since nineteen, sorry, twenty nineteen. Roughly runs a little over three thousand dollars a year. For twenty twenty-one, it's three thousand, four hundred dollars a year. And we're looking for a three years subscription agreement to continue the process moving forward.
Good.
I agree. Good, next.
That's all that we have.
Okay, do we have anything for Frank and his staff? So now Frank, I understand there was some more conversations that needed to happen regarding property that we were moving forward on. Are we gonna add a, a executive session for property at the end of our meeting today?
We have an executive session for property at eleven forty-five. And then we have an executive session to review qualifications and applicants of county administrator at one.
Got it. We have a second page. I didn't, that's probably the first time in a while. Yeah, okay, sounds good. Then we will move forward. So no other questions for Frank? Then we are going to go ahead and take a five-minute break to give everybody an opportunity to do what they need to do. Oh, no, we're gonna move into, sorry about that, Community Services Dave Windham, our break is scheduled for ten forty-five. So Dave, you wanna go ahead and take it?
Okay, good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Good. So starting off this morning, we're start with Kel. Oh, are you on there? Okay, well.
Now go ahead and hit somebody else up.
Right, then let's, let's go to Alex then.
Hi, Alex. Yeah, good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
So this morning, I've got our notification for closures in our shellfish harvesting for the county. This official notice was expected to be August third, so I had prepared for some briefings this month. But it arrived, looks like late July. So I think you guys already received those formal notifications and so I just wanted to provide some narratives and some explanations on these closures and what we're currently doing and what we're obligated to do under the RCWs in reference to them. I've got some explanations there. There's no formal actions needed at this time. Staff is working on our closure response plans and/or addendum to an existing one with the Anis Bay closure. Just, you guys have any questions or concerns with these?
Concerns, but it is what it is.
Yeah, they were a little bit different this time. You know, we have a closure within a closure on the Anis Bay side and that's something that we're currently working on with our Hook Canal Partners. And then the other one is, this is kind of an expansion. They felt like the boundary need to be adjusted based on some poorer water quality sampling that DOH had received, so.
Okay, any comment on this commissioners or just move forward?
No comment.
What else you got, Alex?
That is it. Thank you.
Okay, going back to Kel.
Hey there.
Hi, Kel.
I had you guys turned down. I was trying to listen to Dave, but apparently that didn't work. But I heard Alex talking and I knew we were up, so. All right, good morning. I don't have Marissa with me today. She's on vacation, but I did want to brief the commission about our next priorities for the long-range planning. She, as you know, she's going to be taking the Shoreline Master Program to you in October for you know, to get that wrapped up and adopt our new Shoreline Master Program. And so her and I have a list of things that we have had on our minds to do. Definitely the Mason County Capital Facilities Plan is a priority. But there are some other items that she could also be looking into as we're you know, getting the department heads and you know, the other counties. There's a lot of work outside of the Planning Department that goes into the Capital Facilities Plan. So while her and I are kind of managing that, we wanted to also look to the commission on what other projects do you want her to start looking into and working on? But before I get to that, I do wanna say that Loretta and I have talked and I will be reaching out to Jennifer Byerly as well. And along with Marissa Watson, the four of us are going to get together to kind of map out a plan for the Capital Facilities Plan. Look at what we've got, what we need to add, what's, you know, what's not included, what doesn't need to be included, and then kind of map out a timeline so that the rest of the departments are clear on what it is that's expect, expected of them. And also just kind of coordinate that, you know, the county finance with the capital facilities and making sure we're all meshed together and that we're not doing one thing here and doing another over there. So that's just a heads up and we'll be pulling that together and so more on that later. And the, the other thing before we get into the priorities is an opportunity that the Planning Department has with a Department of Ecology grant. When I first heard about it, it's, it'll be available for us to, or for folks to apply local jurisdictions September first. When I first heard about it, I just kind of brushed it off because I thought, you know, you know, money isn't free and you know, we still need staff to manage it and so I, I didn't consider it, but then I heard more about it, what, what monies could be used for. And I had Julie Lewis, one of our new permit planners, myself and Marissa Watson get on a conference call with Department of Ecology, not a conference call, but a webinar with the Department of Ecology on what the funds would be available for. And we decided that we really could benefit as staff. It's monies we could apply up to a hundred thousand dollars. We could use it for consulting services and we can use it to help us implement our Shoreline Master Program. And the staff, we've come up with ideas, like specific ideas such as we have already a, what's called a common line mitigation plan that supposedly supposed to be helpful for the public to utilize so they do not have to go out and hire a consultant. It's something they could do themselves, but it's not very helpful. And so that's one idea. We thought we could hire a consultant services to help us, help us help the public in implementing what we're asking them to do when it comes to Shoreline Master Program. So I wanted to throw that out there as a consideration to allow us to apply for that grant. Marissa Watson would be the project manager and she would, she would be the one responsible for putting out the, you know, if we were, she would be the one responsible for, for writing the grant with, you know, assistance from myself and other staff. And then if we were successful, then we, she would be the one managing the consultant contract and she's already proven to be a really fantastic staff and I think that would also just help her in her professional, professional growth and I have full confidence that she would be able to take that on along with the other duties. And I did sort of allow her to decide. I said, I, you know, if we do this, you're gonna be appointed, you know, you're gonna be tasked with doing that. And, and so is that something you'd wanna take on? And she feels feels confident to do that. So just looking for Commissioner thoughts on whether or not we'd wanna go after that grant. You could think about it if, if you're not sure yet, or we could have, you know, more conversations or individual conversations if you wanna know more about it. But with that, now I'll just kind of turn it over to you to, to look at. You know, I've got short-term rental regulations that was brought up in a former briefing. Impact fees, so of course we're working on the Belfair EIS, Planned, Planned Action EIS where we're looking at and talking about impact fees, but that's something we should think about countywide and you know, for the other urban growth areas. And then, and then what, what impact fees, school traffic, et cetera. There's also the housing element. I know that the public health side of housing is doing a lot of work. And I talked with Lydia last week about the grant proposal that, or not grant proposal, but rather a request, consulting services for some housing needs assessment and what things on the planning end with our housing element of the comp plan, you know, what could we tie into that? So there's, so there's that, you know, looking at that our housing, our comp plan in its entirety, including the housing element, will be required to be updated by, I believe, twenty twenty-five, I maybe I, yeah, June of twenty twenty-five. So that's something we need, will need to be doing in twenty twenty-five, but it doesn't mean we can't do it earlier. So that's an option. And then the update of the, of the development regulations, just overall, it's been something that the staff, we, we've used it, we get by with it, but there's a lot of cleanup work and that's just more of a housekeeping, keeping item that I think, you know, I would kind of manage Marissa's, you know, her, her capacity to do work, but that's something we'd also like to do and whether it's this twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three, but it is something that, that does need to be done and just wanting to get that in the, in the list so that we, we don't forget about it and it gets out of control as we continue to grow. And then of course, I'm sure you guys have your other, other, other ideas as well.
Okay, so first, let's hit up the, the grant. Commissioners, how do you feel about going after the grant?
Just, just a quick question. So Kel, you said that it opens for applications tomorrow, September, or this week on September first?
That's right.
So it's like Wednesday?
Yeah, so it opens September first and it closes October fourteenth.
Okay. Have you, have you reviewed any of the, I mean, have they released any of the things that you would need in order to determine how much work it's gonna take to actually put an application in or like what? I know there's often a lot of other workload priorities and I don't, I mean, how big of a lift is? Is doing the application gonna be, have you had a chance to look at that?
It, it, part of their webinar, they, they actually spent, we all felt too much time on the, the actual application process. But so we did get a lot of information there. I don't think that piece would be too too burdensome and I also feel like our return on investment on that would be good and I also my connections with Department of Ecology and knowing how, you know, staff there view Mason County and how we're implementing our master program, I feel relatively confident that if we took the time to apply, we're, we'd have a good chance of receiving funding.
Okay.
Good.
And some of that funding could be used to hire someone, correct?
Yeah, we would, I would only, you know, we had an ecology grant which we used to tie, to charge Marissa's time. I would not wanna do that because she needs to be working on the other items like that I've listed and especially the Capital Facilities Plan. So this would be for consultant services.
Yeah, I like the consulting services. That, that sounds better to me. Yeah, no, I think it's a good idea. If you guys, if you think you can manage your time and, and it would benefit the county. Absolutely.
Thank you, Christopher Traska. Commissioner Shutey, was that a positive, a yes?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think if it's not too much of a leap to get the application in and you think will be competitive, then I don't see there, then I'll see a problem with trying.
Okay, so there you go. So that's a yes on that one.
Okay, great, thank you.
On the executive summary and some of the items that they wanna do, I wanna pull one out just to explain a little background on the impact fees. Historically, you guys all know I've never been much of a fan of those. Ten years ago, when I was on the Planning Commission, I worked with the school district and some of the, some of the developers and we actually had a tentative agreement and then the, the superintendent at the time in North Mason decided to come in and blow it completely up. Went from, you know, five, six hundred dollar agreement per household, came in, thought that they could strong arm and do eighteen hundred with an escalation. That was ten years ago, so that would be incredibly high. After all these years, and, and I ended up standing against it back then, even though I was the one that was bringing it forward. After all these years, we've been working with some of the individuals, again, talking with developers, with the school districts, with superintendents, the, you know, the majority of them. And everybody is on the same page again right now and understanding and believing that there is a need for it, at least as a bottom line. Currently, the agreements that they've had have carried on to the new developments you see up in North Mason, the school district and the developers actually agreed at the same numbers, knowing that, hoping that that's what it's gonna be for the long term. And that number is currently between five and six hundred dollars per unit. I myself have, if everybody can be on the same page and be in agreement, this may be the time to bring that forward for the entire county as an actual impact fee that is both, you know, small enough and realistic enough, won't have an impact on development, but yet be able to create some capital money for the schools when these developments come in. And so I would love to see staff be able to bring something forward and have them work that out through the Planning Commission and bring it back to us for further discussion, especially if we can get everyone the same page.
So I guess maybe a couple of things, you know, not opposed to it. I think there's room for conversation in particular as we're looking at the Plant Action EIS in Belfair and there is a section on traffic impact fees. You know, I think there is, there it's, we would, we would need to have a lot of engagement from the school districts if we're gonna apply this more broadly throughout the county and understand what their, their needs are and, you know, making this realistic. I would be, I think, inclined to consider that if we're also considering something for traffic as well as is, is listed out in the EIS. You know, and I'm sure folks from the fire service would be, you know, coming in on the, on the tail end of, of that as well. And so just being mindful of, you know, how these add up over time. Number one and number two, I think having some predictability and stability with them would be really important. So if we are gonna do it, I would, I would want there to be some mechanism in there to increase overtime so that we don't end up in a situation like Kitsap where they go from whatever it was, seven fifty per unit, that whatever they agreed on here recently, I think they're talking about as high as forty-five hundred dollars. I, I don't wanna put us in a position to do that. So I, I think this isn't something that we could rush into. This is something that would take a lot of deliberation, discussion. It really could be facilitated through the, you know, what we learned out of the Planned Action EIS. So that's number, I would, I would be open to this conversation, but really wanna be thoughtful about how we approach it. And so that kind of leads me to my next question and it's sort of the, the tie into this for Kel is where are we on the Belfair EIS process and what should we be expecting over the next couple, you know, the coming weeks? Process and, and what should we be expecting over the next couple, or, you know, the coming weeks and hopefully not longer than months, but what's, what's the near-term future look like with that?
Quiring minds want to know, you're the third person this, since last week, that's been, uh. Wanting to get a follow-up, so I do have a. Um, a check-in with the consultant team on Wednesday, so we have a normal. Our normal check-in on Wednesdays and we, the last two have been, I was on vacation and then. Lisa from Burke was on vacation and all that, so this will be the first time that we've. That I'll have in, in about three to four weeks, so I won't have a. Better understanding of the timeline, uh, I do know that with the, you know, we added. Time to the contract and the additional scope. And the sub consultants have been working on that additional scope, there was some traffic stuff that. Related to comments that Washington had sent us and then also some. I'll just say generically, some water work. From some, that the sub can, other sub consultants are working on, uh, related to the comments we received from the tribe. So this Wednesday I will have a good update on kind of where they're at and then. Lisa and I are going to talk about the timeline, so when, when we could expect to go back to the planning commission because they were. They were this close to making a recommendation, uh, and then we had to kind of pull back and wait, so we'll need to go back to the planning commission and then of course bring it to the board. So, um, I will. Put a, put in a briefing this week for next Monday to give you guys an update.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think for me, I'd like to hold off until we get that report. Before moving forward. Impact fees.
Oh, oh, from the, from the Belfair EIS report? Okay.
You know, personally, I don't want to rest everything off of one piece. What I'm talking about with the school impact fees is throughout the whole county, not just. Based on the Belfair EIS and it's the idea of taking advantage of the idea that they're having the conversations, I'd love to see us take things, uh. Uh, piecemeal in this situation, you're talking schools on one and then, uh, traffic on another, if you try to lump them all together, what is the old expression of the enemy? Of good is perfect. I'd like to just see us work on what we can and what we have people already working on it and mostly agreeing to first. Instead of trying to take it all and then killing it by, by putting everything together.
But to be fair though, I mean, we're going to have to have a conversation about traffic impact fees.
Absolutely, I agree.
When, when we get the Belfair EIS report, I, I don't think that it's, it's not going to be. Wanted, I don't think one of the, you know, is going to, you know, cannibalize the other, um, because I think we're going to have to, I think this fall, we're going to, we'll, we'll probably have the traffic. Impact fee conversation before we have the school impact fee conversation, just by virtue of where we're at in the EIS process, so. Just keep that in mind, I think is, you know, is the conversation moves forward.
Absolutely, like I said, I see him as being separate, uh, I've had conversations with some of the developers in regards to traffic impact fees too. And especially if we're on something like that, though, we're probably talking just in. My guess is we'll be talking within urban growth areas on traffic fees, not on every home, uh, built. But, uh, that's, I guess, is going to be up to the commission. But I'd like to see a separate amount, I'd love to see him work on something that's already being worked on right now. And they're actually even utilizing. It makes sense to pull together and get some of that work done, at least for a straw dog to have those conversations, where right now we don't have any of it in writing. To even have the discussion. So where are we at on, on that altogether? Can we, can we separate them out and at least have them have the discussions to put together what that program would look like from the conversations already having with the school districts and the developers?
And are you bringing in the fire departments as well?
Right now, the only ones I've had the discussions with is the school districts and developers on that part. The fire department fees, they may have maybe something different.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I just feel like we need to, to see the picture as a whole. I mean, I, I understand that they're separate, but I would rather see them as a whole, just so I know where we're at.
I'm going to throw this out there and see if that's helpful and I apologize because, or not apologize, I'll just be, um, honest, I haven't worked in a jurisdiction that has had impact fees. Um, of course, I'm aware of impact fees and how it works, but I think. It might be helpful, it'll be helpful for me and may it will be helpful for the commission to just see. How other jurisdictions, just how it's laid out, how that, how each impact fee is separated, are they all in one? Um, and just get a little more background and bring that forward to you. Um, of course, you know, any discussions that, that folks are having is, is fine, I also want to note that. I'm reminding myself that Monday is a holiday next week and so if you. If any of you are interested in getting an update from me on the EIS after Wednesday. Um, I'd say, uh, just, you know, send me an email and we'll find time to chat one-on-one on that, on what the, kind of the next plan of attack is and I'll. Just plan on briefing on the thirteenth.
Okay, I'll go on the record now, as I'll take one of those calls.
Okay.
Me too.
Okay, and maybe we can do that, um, I know the three of us and. Uh, individually and with Dave Wyndham, we're, we're, I'm going to reach out to you guys, I've. Sent you all an email last week with Dave, Dave and I had a chance to chat and so, uh, let's have that. We'll do it after Wednesday and then that way we, I could update you on the Belfair EIS and the, um, just kind of the organizational plans. At the same time.
So I think, I think we have a couple of different, so Kevin, I think you're going to have to weigh in on this one. One wants to do it all together, I myself think we do them separately, then bring them together. I don't know that you can do them all together or you'll be in a situation where it's, I want mine. No matter what, and I think we need to separate them out and see which ones are the most important and negotiate.
Get a clarification, Randy, on, on what you mean, are you talking about the different kinds of impact fees?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes, so, uh, Kevin, you know.
You know, I, I, I guess, you know, just to kind of go back to my earlier point, I'm a little bit agnostic on it overall, I mean, I think, I, 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 you know. We're not going to have a decision this month or in, in September on school impact fees and I think. Having the Belfair EIS happen this fall, having this happen, this, I, 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 I just don't see a way around us. Having a conversation, at least without having those two being discussed at the same time. So I, I guess I really don't, I mean, I don't care if Kel has the capacity, you know, in the next couple of weeks to work on school impact fees and start pulling things together there. I, I mean, that's, that's great, I'm not going to stop that, I think that's, you know, we're going to have to have that conversation anyway, so I, I don't really, I'm not sure I. Really have an opinion one way or another, because I think it's going to happen regardless.
And I think it's going to happen regardless, I just know that right now I've got, uh, different entities waiting to actually start the conversation. And since they're ready to start it, it'd be nice if they could have it with. Staff and put together the straw dog, because it still has to go through a whole long process, it's just getting the original, an original, uh, working straw dog to work with, that's the only thing I'm looking for.
And I guess, and I guess that's what I'm saying is, I'm saying, I don't, it doesn't matter if that happens now or not, I mean, if it does, that's great, I mean, if, if, if they want to reach out to Kel, there's nothing that would. Stop that from happening, I think, you know, we're, we're already, we already have information on the traffic impact fees anyway with the EIS, so. That process is already started in some regard, um, and so they're, they're behind that now anyway, so if they want to call Kel in September and. Provide information and want to start working through what, what that policy might look like, then. And that's fine, I, I don't have any issue with that, I mean, I just don't think, when it comes time to make a decision, we're not going to be, you know, we're not going to be. Just looking at the one or the other, I think they're, they're going to be pretty concurrent and we're going to have to make some of those decisions.
Okay, all right, so, uh, also the short-term rental regulations. I still think that that's important.
Can I say one, go back to the impact fees before we move on there, I just wanted to give a heads up, I do have. A meeting tomorrow morning with. I'm, now I'm, I'm so sorry, fail, anyway, I'm meeting with one of the local. Credit union. Persons to talk about impact fees just in general on how it would work from a lender perspective, so I could wrap my brain around. What would be the best, um, way to formulate it, so it's really just kind of a, a one-on-one conversation and so that might help. Uh, in a future conversation we have about impact fees as well.
And with that, it's one of the things that I had talked to her about and asked the, the consideration of putting the impact fees on the. Occupancy, not on, in the beginning for. For development to get their permits, it, it makes it easier for them to get them built and it ends up, uh. Easier for them to continue to do the construction without the burden until the end when they're ready to sell it and make it work. Just a way of helping developers also to, to move forward earlier.
Yep.
So on the, on the short-term rental regulations. Again, I, I, I think those are important, uh, was brought forward, I think it's important that we have that somewhere in the background being worked on as well now. Uh, so we can get to it eventually, how do you know if it went by at a time?
I agree.
Does that help you, Kel, to know to spend staff time on it?
Yes, I think what would be helpful is perhaps to know. The priority from you three. Over impact fees and short-term rentals, because. We're doing the capital facilities plan and then, you know, I, I'm finding Marissa's pretty. High functioning, but you know, there is only, you know, there's only so much a person can do and I don't want one priority to fall to the wayside because we're working on another one, so if you guys. Can figure out.
Well, it's not, it sounds to me like the short-term rental, everybody's in agreement now, the impact fees some are for later, so let's separate that out and put that. Behind, uh, short-term.
Well, and I, I would just also ask, you know, Kel, what, what kind of staff time would each of these potentially take, I, I, I don't know enough about. You know, is, is capital facilities, you know, fifty percent of the time and then you're trying to use these to make up the other fifty percent and of that. Will be, you know, a third?
I'm, I'm guessing that the capital facilities plan will be the bulk of the time, but really, once it gets going and I'll have a better idea after I talk with. You know, after the four of us, Marissa, Loretta and Jennifer meet on kind of a timeline and, and kind of. Wrap her mind around, um, the scope. Is once that gets going and we get the other departments involved, then it's really going to be Marissa kind of managing each department head, making sure they're getting her the information she needs. Almost like we're, me working with the consultants with Belfair, you know, sometimes there's a lot of my time that's required with that and other times I'm just kind of wait, sitting back waiting for the consultants to do work. So that's why I think it, it, I, she'll have the capacity to really dive into one or the other, the short-term rentals or the impact fees. And that's why I'd like her to, you know, or like to know, like, what should she dive into first? Um, whether it's short-term or impact fees, it sounds like short-term rentals, but I'm not. I'll, I'll let you guys, let me know if that's true or not.
Well, do you, do you have a feeling as to whether which, you know, what's a higher priority?
Oh, for. Well, impact fees are going to be inevitable and it's just a matter of our timing and I know that we are. There's growth in the pipeline that we're aware of. And short-term rentals has been an issue that's been ongoing and. Continues to be ongoing and if that is going to, to me, I, I'm feeling like the short-term rental. Program or, or just considering the county looking at having a short-term rental program, because I don't think we even know, like, yes, we want to have one or. No, we don't, I think it, we're at the stage of do we want to? And it's going to require a lot of public input and a lot of workshops and it's, I, I'm thinking of it similarly to the one we went through the. Uh, PBRS program, which we ultimately decided, you know what, we don't want to go there, that's not, doesn't seem like a good fit for Mason County. That's how I feel about the short-term rental, so with that being said, I almost think that we should. Knowing the economic development that's going to be occurring in both, you know, not only shelter, or not only Belfair, but in the Shelton UGA as well. Uh, is that we look at the impact fees first and then move on to the short-term rentals, but keep it on our minds so we know that the public who are concerned about the. Short-term rentals know that we, we, uh, we understand the concerns from, um. From all sides of it and that we are, uh, going to be working on that, but it's, we've got some things to get, get taken care of first and then we'll move on to that.
I think, um, I, I, you know, I, I think there's a lot of truth in that, I, I think. The impact fee conversation is, sounds like it's already started, at least Commissioner Netherland has had some. Communications with some school leaders, um, there already might be a chunk of work. Done, um, that, that we could glean from, that might make that process shorter, so I probably would put that ahead of. Um, the short-term rental regulations, but I would start doing, I would, I would dedicate some time to getting the short-term rental regulation. Conversation going and just sort of understand what our options are and, and what a process might look like. Um, so that we can, we can start moving that forward, because I think ultimately that will take. A longer. View than, um, you know, a longer amount of time than the, than the impact fee process.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that.
Agreed.
Okay, so what, what next?
Okay, so Commissioners, I wanted to talk to you a little bit.
Thank you, Kel.
Sorry, I cut you off there, so, uh, I talked a little bit about, uh, some COVID things that have come up since, uh, last week. So we did talk at Eric Manis morning about updates from the PIOs, they're putting out, uh, sources that would be a one-page, uh, one-stop shop for basically. A, just a ton of info on COVID, whether it's the governors. Vaccine mandate or mask mandates, all those regulations, all those things that people are looking at, data, those sorts of things, you know, one webpage, so you'll see that coming up shortly. We do, well, we are experiencing shortages as we, as we're in PPE test kits. And then I'm, I'm seeing some concern about the availability of Johnson and Johnson, so we're working on that to see where that's available. And to try to point folks towards that vaccine if that's what they're looking for. Uh, but we're, we're seeing folks having a tough time ordering it, so I'll be getting back to you on that. On the vaccination mandate update, so the document that came out last week was a, about a fourteen-page. FAQ, and I would really like to sit down if we could in a workshop format with, uh, with sheriff, jail. HR, us, the. Prosecutor's office and go through this, because it, it winds up affecting a lot more than I had initially thought, the way that this is written. For example, uh, nurses that are working inside the jail, uh, we would have to certify their COVID cards. As the, um, as the facility folks, we would have to certify that, so there's more to this than what I had initially thought and then. If, there's also lawsuits that have been filed too, so we're not sure exactly it's going to look like by the time October eighteenth rolls around. But I think it's, it'd be a good idea to start having those discussions about where this actually applies to Mason County, within county government at least. So I would like to set that up as if there is an appetite to do that.
Right, my understanding too is that, that we are. Looking at getting some more clarification. From the governor's office.
Yeah.
The unions are starting to work on this as well.
Yeah, and I. Yeah, I sent a letter last week saying, hey, you know, this is. This, when you use words like primarily, if, if throws confusion into the document. You know, who defines what primarily means, so if you have, um, a facility, say in a, in a jail and. That piece of the facility does healthcare, nursing services, how much of that affects the whole facility? And then if, if a sheriff deputy carries a Narcan. According to this, it's your, some interpretations of this, they would be considered a healthcare provider. So, um, the, yeah, we've got to get some more clarity around what's, what's here, maybe. I don't know, maybe wait a week or so to see if more clarification comes out, but I think we do need to sit down and kind of talk about this from a county perspective.
Yeah, I hate to jump into it too soon, because I do expect the, the governor's office to, to come out with some more clarifications.
So, you know, I think. Just recognizing what the timeline is. Just recognizing what the timeline is um for when uh if you're having the two dose vaccine. Um when you would need to initiate that um versus uh you know, the the one dose, um that that's. Between the fourth and the eighth of September, is that about right?
Yes, correct.
Which is um in a few days, so I you know, I would, I would at a minimum expect, you know, Dave, you to be working with Frank and um. Maybe Tim Whitehead at a minimum to talk through some of these things, even as we anticipate potentially some clarification from the governor's office. I would rather you be prepared. Um and do some of that groundwork ahead of time. And then if it's, if it becomes less of a, if the mandate changes and there's less requirements, then no harm, no foul.
Yeah.
If it is this, then we're already thinking through it.
Alright, yeah, and I can certainly send out to all employees kind of what that timeline looks like. Just so everybody's on the same sheet up front.
Right, yeah, there there are quite a few terms in here that that are kind of. Confusing, I guess, so when it says it depends and like you said primarily, there's. I've asked for clarification as well through the governor's office, so we'll see, we'll see what we can get.
Um another thing that that uh we worked on this last week was a redefining of. It's called our uh elk funds, which are education. Um and lab capacity funds and the, I think I spoke about this before, that's been broadened a a long ways. And what I would like to do is to bring in a couple of positions and I'll I'll have this for our our next briefing, which won't be next week, but. We can add a testing person for the county, so a person who can do testing for the jail, for the courts, for us, for you know. And have a person on county site with test kits that can do testing, uh I think that would be a valuable thing for us. And then uh also another educator and we can also start putting some of um. My risk, my dollar, you know, towards my salary, towards that fund as well, and this this funding goes out through uh June of twenty twenty three. So we have funding for quite a ways out there and it's, I've got more than six hundred thousand dollars uh coming in at this point, so we got plenty of funding to do that work. So my suggestion is is to, I'll I'll put forward a couple of positions and then and then run those to the commission, get some folks on board.
I'd be supportive of seeing that um proposal put together.
And can I encourage everyone to just wash your, wash your hands? I've heard some statistics that will just make your jaw drop. It's gross, come on people, wash your hands.
Yeah.
You think washing hands is good? Should you go get the vaccine?
Yeah. So um moving along, if that if we're gonna, I'll also start putting that together. Uh I did go down to Centralia, this kind of relates back to uh RIA fifteen and sixteen fourteen work. And looked at their water project down there, it's about a four and a half million dollar project where they've got China Creek comes in and floods. And they built uh ponds at different levels, so as the water comes up and we spill into ponds. And then will be slowly released back into the system, kind of a managed offer recharge, uh only in a. In inside city limits, so it was a good project to use a a lot of um. What we can call Beaver Dam analogs to slow the water down as it goes through the course, uh makes the water colder, deeper and. Those sorts of projects we could look at in RIA fourteen and fifteen. Not maybe as a county project, because we don't own the property typically along the streams, but uh in support of those projects and. And maybe from planning or zoning or whatever we need to on that. The um I found out that the permitting is primarily through ecology and core of engineers, so we would really have very little to do with the. The permitting part of that, so. That's a good project, I I will share photos with the commission on that and then. Lastly, is there some new guidance coming out from the schools just came out and I haven't had a chance to digest that and I will put that out. On to the commission and then to schools as well, so.
Dave, do we know um are all of our county school districts um planning to begin the year in person?
That's my understanding, uh the direct coming out is everybody starts in person. I did hear this morning what they're having problems with is school buses. And having enough drivers and then what do we do about congestion on the school buses, so I think they're still working through some of those things.
Okay.
Yeah, well, as as I was explaining this morning, one of the problems are happening on the school buses is they're they're being told that there's a capacity of seventy two. But that was set up for second graders, not middle school or whatever, and so now they're doing less uh, they have less drivers to work with. They're doubling kids up on the buses, trying to make the routes work the best that they can, because that's what they have to work with. But those buses are not made to have seventy two middle schoolers on it, there is a big difference uh on capacity. And some of the drivers are having issue with that. So uh I'd like to share a few things, uh I'm shocked with how many people I guess actually watch our our briefings. Uh after last week's briefing, I had a lot of telephone calls and it's always interesting, because I always think we're by ourselves, that a few people tune in. But apparently there's a lot more than a few. If you don't mind, uh Dave, eventually, could you get us some type of hard sheet information showing the percentage of those that are vaccinated? Uh and getting sick uh in comparison with those who are not vaccinated and getting sick, the numbers that we shared last week. Uh we've been sharing that out and it it's, you know, very important that we actually have uh hard numbers that we can show, so anything you could share would be appreciated. Some misinformation or 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 things that are being said out there, again, I'm not telling anybody to get vaccinated, you get down with your bad self, you do you, I'll do me. Uh I'm just trying to get some information out there so that people know uh what's accurate, what's not. One of the questions that keep coming back is uh there's a statement out there that people who have been vaccinated, when they get it, they shed much more uh than those that don't. It doesn't matter if you get vaccinated, the whole idea is you take care of you, they take care of them, if they, if you get vaccinated, then that's not an issue for you uh and your family. So you take care of your family if that's what you choose to do. Um the other big one is people are saying, don't get vaccinated, the new uh study from Israel shows that. That uh those who have a natural antibody by from getting sick are much stronger and keep from getting uh reaffected than the vaccine. Well, that may be true, but a hundred percent of them were were sick. And these are the survivors that made it through it, the question is, is do you really want to wait so you can get sick, is that your best way of getting vaccinated? Uh is to get sick and be able to fight it off that way, and then you get to find out whether or not you're gonna have the worst symptoms that others don't have. Uh and I I hope, you know, you choose what's best for you and your family. Uh another thing is there was a graph that Dave shared this morning, uh appreciate if you would make sure you get that out too as well, Dave. That graph showed the the age groups that are getting sick. Uh and if you'll notice, the very lowest on that list of the age group that are getting sick are elderly, which happened to. Coincidentally be the highest vaccinated uh group in our county. So I'm just saying there's there's some correlation between these things and, you know, uh people might want to notice some of those instead of just being mad at each other. And if somebody doesn't get the vaccine, God bless them, don't be mad at them, you do you, if they want to get the vaccine, God bless them. You know, you do you, so with that being said, I just wanted to throw that out just so, because I found out so many more do read or do watch our videos. And I wanted to make sure that information was out there, but that biggest part about the one in Israel, that may be true, it may be stronger if you get it. If you actually get COVID and you're able to keep from getting sick again, let's just hope you don't get COVID the first time.
Hey Dave, along along those lines, um is there any, is there any data we could get from either Mason Health or? Um perhaps even DOH is putting this out about what the average hospital stay costs, what your what your bill is. You know, and and is we're all, you know, we're all about risk, weighing risks and and benefits and everything. Um understanding what the cost of a typical COVID stay might might be for a person, even that's insured. You know, be helpful to have that information, I think, out there as well.
And then you have the different costs too, whether you're in ICU or or just a a regular bedroom too, so that would be interesting.
Yeah, if your insurance pays eighty percent, you've got twenty, there's a lot still with that.
Okay, I'll see what I can find.
Anything else for Dave? Alright Dave, thank you very much.
Great, thanks.
Uh let's take a five minute break, we'll be back at uh, we're gonna say eleven seven, eleven seven.
Yep.
Alright, welcome back, everybody, we're gonna go ahead and go back into session, Mason County Commission briefing, week August thirtieth, we're going to. Move into Public Works, uh looks like Mike, you're leading this one today, right?
I'm here. Uh good morning.
Morning.
Well, first up, uh we'd like to replace a couple of our electronic reader boards, uh they've recently been damaged uh again. Uh solar panels stolen, keyboards ripped out and they're to the point of uh. Not being able to fix them up again, so we'd like to look at uh state contract of about thirty five thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars and fifty one cents. To uh replace two of the boards.
Uh is it possible to look at something that is more tamper or tamper resistant?
Uh these are, uh Jeremy was researching them and they've got, they've got heavier um. Doors and lock systems on them, so he thinks these would be a lot better.
Okay, Commissioners, you you good?
How about an electric fence around them, just, you know, curious.
You know, then we get sued for somebody gets shocked, you realize that, right?
Oh, I shock myself with electric fences, it hurts for a bit, but. You recover.
We'll still get the lawsuit, just, I don't disagree with you, just.
Uh next item is uh purchase of a handheld reflectometer, it's uh basically. Uh test the reflectivity of our signs, uh we're due to do that uh each year, report that to Crab. Uh currently, what we're doing is going out at nighttime and and just visually uh. Interpreting if they're, you know, if they're work or if they're uh reflective enough, uh this will be a high tech gadget. It also has GPS in it and uh the software uh gives you ability to track your uh your sign. So they'll be able to uh download this onto their phone system and be able to just drive around and know where the signs are supposed to be, whether they're one down or not. And uh it'll it'll get us a lot better, better operation for it.
I'm in favor of you getting retro ref- reflectometer.
So completely stupid question, I fully uh admit that uh heading into this. How is this different than, I mean, like what you're doing, which is like a like a flashlight or whatever, I mean, how much more does, how much more information does this give you?
Yeah, this is very high tech, it 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 breaks it down for the type of cover that's on the sign, because there's uh there's different types of. Over the years, a different kind of covers and it's a, you know, it's a scientific way of doing it, it's it's much more.
Does it give us protections against uh lawsuits, it's claiming that uh they couldn't see it and stuff? And you have it on record that uh it does this and has this much uh reflection and.
That is exactly it, yep.
Okay.
Commissioner Trask, you good?
Yeah, it sounds cool.
Let's go out and get us a retro reflectometer.
It just like saying it.
I do. One of those words that are worthless, it's like, come on.
Uh next up is road closure for Highland Road, we're gonna be putting in a box culvert, concrete box culvert of twenty foot wide. Nine feet tall uh fish enhancement box culvert uh at about mile post point, point uh three, three, I think it is, yes. And uh so let's just just barely end off of uh Shelton Matlock Road. We'll be closing that from uh September twentieth to October first, although we shouldn't need the whole two weeks. We should need about a a week and a couple of days to be able to open traffic back up.
Out there in Highland, we had a lot of neighbors the last time, but everything's sounding good this time?
We are, uh our our remaining um reader boards are out in 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 uh. In the vicinity right now for pre-warning and and we're making it more. More public information on it, yes.
Thank you.
How big are the fish that go through there?
They are, they are that big. Uh the existing culverts are two, I think they're uh forty two inch culverts and we're gonna be putting a twenty foot wide structure, so. We should be able to handle any fish that migrates.
Any orca that wants to migrate upstream is welcome.
So this is uh this one, we're we're kind of pushing a fish, what fisheries window is uh is actually September thirtieth and so uh. But the uh the supplier is going to deliver the structure on the twenty fourth, so. We should be able to get it in and close everything up before we get past the fish window.
And so just to remind everybody, this is, this is a requirement that's given to the county. Yeah, not 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 our choice.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner, uh yeah, people that get mad at us, we. It makes no sense sometimes, but a twenty foot culvert, when there's a three foot or four foot culvert, another hundred feet downstream, but that's the law.
Yep. Yep, thanks, Steve.
Uh the only thing else we have here is upcoming calendar's hearing for September fourteenth uh for solid waste management plan amendment. I believe that's it for us.
I was gonna say, hey, Richard, go ahead, what you got?
Yeah, one more. Contract amendment number five from Kennedy Janks. I I'm I'm embarrassed about that because I just came to you like last month with number four to extend the contract. Um amendment number five is only to add construction inspection services. For the southern half that's presently being installed from the railroad crossing down to the existing system. Um and and this would be covered under the existing contract uh with unspent monies. And uh it's if this, th- these inspections are pretty much out of our league, it's like twenty, thirty foot deep sewer, so. Uh we would, what our recommendation is for you to uh execute contract or amendment number five with Kennedy Jakes. Uh and uh and approve that.
With no dollar increase to the agreement.
No more increase, just uh and and this also would uh, it it doesn't increase the dollar amount, it would actually add. A significant amount of time till June thirtieth, twenty twenty two, just in case con- for some reason, construction lasted that long. So we'd be changing the date.
Any issues with that, Commissioners?
None for me.
Okay, let's move forward, honor.
Thank you.
Alright, do you guys have anything for for uh Mike or Richard?
I got nothing.
Uh thank you very much, Mike, for uh the uh uh those stop sign up there and and stuff, it was very much appreciated, they. They definitely, I think you may have helped save somebody young on on uh on a golf cart blowing through there, because I understand they're stopping. So, good job, alright, uh thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Is she on here, next up is the sheriff's office, uh with Cheryl Hilt, there she is.
Good morning Commissioners, um wondering if we could start, I believe, Under Sheriff Adams is on as well.
I am, I'm here.
Would you like to start first, uh Under Sheriff or?
Yeah, you bet, so um we, this will hopefully be the fastest thing you have today. Um as you know, the county um received revenue a few weeks ago in the summer. Two hundred and fifty grand and some change, I think it was two fifty three or two fifty eight, something like that. Um specifically for law enforcement and criminal justice to mitigate the costs of implementing some of the statutes that were enacted this year. Um as you know, we we've made some purchases, about seventy five thousand dollars um of that money. Uh I I think uh T. Spurling came over and showed you some of the uh patrol level ballistic shields that we had. Had uh received and and some of the other things that we had ordered. My my general quest question was um is the guidance from the commission. To um. Continue to spend that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to um purchase things to mitigate the the effects of that. Uh those, the the recent legislation, and we do have other things that we um can categorize in that area. But I wanted to make sure that uh we were being transparent, we're on the same page with the commission about what what your intent was.
I can only speak for myself, but yes, please. Commissioners?
Oh, I agree.
Yeah, I would just ask that, um you know, as you go, you you brief us on what you're getting and, you know, that way we can. Just kind of be apprised of it and I know you're not gonna get anything you don't need, given these changes, but um just to, like you said. With that transparency element of it.
Yeah, absolutely, and I can tell you so far with the seventy five thousand dollars, we've um we've purchased some. Uh what what's called tri-chambers that our SWAT team uses in order to uh um get people out of a house safely. Um when they might not want to otherwise, which is in 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 accordance with using lesser level. um, get people out of a house safely, um, when they might not want to otherwise, which is in, in, in accordance with using lesser levels of force. Um, we've purchased, uh, pepper ball guns, which is a less lethal use of force. That we're going to be issuing out to our patrol folks. Um, we've purchased those ballistic patrol shields so that our, our patrol officers have the ability to safely talk to and put a barrier between them and other people so that we have a little bit more of a standoff distance. Um, we're also going to be purchasing some, uh, um, some helmets and face shields that will make things safer for our patrol folks. And then we're also looking into, um, a, a few things that are newer on the market. One of those things is something called a Bola Wrap. I don't know if you've seen those, but it's basically a, um, it's a device that shoots out uh, a small cable and, and will wrap around a person. So wrap around their legs or wrap around their arms in order to, uh, detain them without using a different level of force. Uh, fairly new on the market and we haven't tried one out. So we've got one of those coming to see if that will, uh, uh, fit the bill in that, that, uh, less lethal category of, of items. So, um, I know we're going to be meeting this week to talk a little bit more about some of the other things that might fit in there. Um, obviously we have the whole training component of, of those statutes and, um, training our officers on what the intent is. And so we might, we might have some purchases on the other side that have more to do with, uh, training and other, other things along those lines rather than equipment. But, uh, we'll definitely come back and talk to you about what those things will be.
Now, I know you mentioned patrol, but I, I, I think you already are, but I hope you're also looking at, uh, uh, those are staffing the jails and, and like as well. Make sure we have all, as much as possibly able to protect them.
Yeah, without question. The, the primary impact on the jail from the legislation was in the area of use of force. And so we're probably going to be looking at some different, um, different items for our gym as far as mats and other things that we use across the, across the department uh, jail as well as patrol folks. So certainly we have those conversations with the chiefs from all the divisions so we can make sure that we hit that equitably.
Thank you. Any questions for the Under Sheriff on this?
Yeah, just one. Go ahead, Commissioner. Go for it, go for it.
Um, mine's just kind of snarky. I was going to ask who's going to be the, the testy, the testor and the testy.
Oh, I will absolutely do it. As a matter of fact, back when the pepper ball guns came out, I was at a training session up CJTC and they were asking a whole bunch of people if they would volunteer to do it. And, uh, they, they said, we'll give you a free pocket knife if you'll do it. So of course I volunteered to get the free pocket knife. And I can tell you that the pepper balls work very well. I'm not sure it was worth the knife, but I still have it. So, yeah, I will find volunteers. Well, we'll put it that way.
I'd say the one that you shoot at them to restrain them when they're moving, uh, what do you call it? Bolo balls or whatever? Yeah, if, if I volunteered, would you have to measure how far I can roll? Because when a big guy, you roll a lot, so.
Come on over, we'll throw you in the mix.
Any other questions for the Under Sheriff?
Yeah, just, I wanted to bring up it's, uh, sort of similar, or it's along these lines, but not directly related to the money, the funding that you're talking about, to the Under Sheriff. But, um, I know in the past we've talked about the, um, the, uh, expansion project at, uh, the SO for a second floor above the gym. And just wanted to see where your thoughts were on that and, and maybe we can have a quick conversation about that, about looking for some REIT money to at least get some design work moving if there's interest in that. But I know as you kind of begin to build out that gym to use it for more training and distancing and all that kind of stuff. Just where's the thinking of the office on that now? And is, you know, there's an opportunity for us to, to look at some, some REIT money for that.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I, I think that, that project is probably more, more relevant now than it ever has been in the past. I, I, not only do we need the, the full training area, where the gym is at now, um, but we could definitely use a, a second floor in that gym and, and a remodel of the, the upstairs. And, uh, I, I kind of envisioned that being a, a two-step process. One, we would need to, we would need to spend the money on the, on the design so that we know what it would look like, so that we can get an idea of what it would cost in the future. And so I think a good first step, um, when, when we can do it is to, to go out for the, go out for the design work and some conceptualizations of what that, what that should look like in order to maximize the space that we have.
Now, as you already know, with, with our REIT, especially REIT two, anything we spend, uh, on this, we won't be able to spend, uh, on the jail. But I think it's important. Do you have an, an actual number? What it would cost right now to, uh, get a design?
Nope, I don't. We would have to go out and, uh, look at that. I'd probably talk to, probably talk to Kelly. He knows much more about all of that than I do and, uh, we could certainly find that out.
I think we're at the highest level we've ever been for money coming in on the REIT. Uh, so now it's probably a good time to talk about it, uh, or at least to tag Kelly to move forward with seeing what it will cost. Commissioner Trask, where, where are you at on that?
No, I think that's a good idea too. And, and Frank, if you're still listening to, if we could maybe do that with the prosecutor's office as well.
Frank, oh, here he comes. Nice ceiling. There we go. Yes, not a problem.
So just for clarification, I would be supportive of doing that evaluation for both the SO and the prosecutor's office, as Commissioner Trask mentioned.
Same. Will do.
And I, I think, you know, I think doing that in, you know, this fall and, and teeing it up for potentially a capital budget request, um, you know, would make a lot of sense.
Absolutely.
Can't argue with that one.
Okay, thank you. We will, uh, reach out to, uh, Kelly and see if we can get that, uh, process started.
All right, what do you got next?
Um, so just one quick question, uh, on the, what we're calling the five, uh, five oh nine two funds. Are we going to do the request that transfer, uh, in November, December, or is that going to be different in some way? I just want to make sure we're doing it right.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question. Commissioners, did you understand or?
Yeah, and I think what I would do is check with Jennifer and Frank and then, uh, bring that. Yeah.
Then I just have one more quick thing and then, uh, Chief Hanson has, has some information. We did get an additional, we applied for, didn't think we were going to get, uh, an additional forty thousand dollars for litter cleanup. Uh, we applied for it anyway. It is for, uh, state highway intersections um, or on and off ramps. We did get that forty thousand dollars. So I'll be bringing that amendment over to, um, Commissioner Netherland to sign, uh, this morning and we'll get that, get that to you. Uh, but we did get that additional forty thousand dollars for the next biennium.
Okay, but we had already asked for it and we'd already agreed as a commission?
So this is in addition to, this is an amendment on our original, uh, litter control grant. So we got a hundred and eight thousand dollars in the original appropriation. This is an additional forty thousand dollars. So we're up to a hundred and forty-eight, excuse me, forty-five thousand.
My problem is, is I can't sign it without it being okayed by the other commission. That's all I'm saying. Uh, Frank, can you pop on, please? Whoa, you're not Frank.
No, but if that's an amendment to that original contract, yes, Randy's right. It needs to go on a commission agenda so they can approve it.
But we can do it tomorrow. We could have it, if you can get it over to us, we can have it thrown on for tomorrow to get it taken care of ASAP. Will that work for you, Cheryl?
It's, yes, I have the amendment. It came to me on Friday, so I have the, the documents. I just would need to, uh, get the agenda item over to you. Yeah.
Diane, can you get it on for tomorrow?
We can, but is there, is there a reason we can't hold it till the fourteenth?
I don't think there's any urgency to it. We wouldn't be buying for our first reimbursement until September anyway. So I, I don't, I don't think we really have any urgency, uh, but I can.
But September what? Because of Go ahead, Diane.
Fourteenth is our next commission meeting after tomorrow.
Yeah, so do we need it for, for immediately then? Because she's putting in for him in September that.
We wouldn't put our first reimbursement in until the end of September.
Oh, the end of September?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so we should, we should.
Are you comfortable waiting until the fourteenth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, then Chief Hanson has something for you.
Uh, good morning Commissioners. Uh, also in your package, there is a briefing uh, regarding jail, electronic, uh, jail key inventory control system. Um, it's called the Key Watcher. Uh, this system, um, is going to help us back better manage our key inventories and who has them and who doesn't have them. And, um, which ultimately will benefit the safety and security of our, of our facility. The system costs eighteen thousand dollars. Uh, we caught on to it by, uh, when we toured Kitsap County. Uh, the, they have the same system installed up there and, uh, they really like it. And we thought that that would be a great addition to our facility. It's something that we could use in the future. So with, if and when we ever expand, it's not like it's going to, it would have to go away. And, uh, we are asking that we use hard funds to pay for it. So it's not going to cost the county additional funds.
I'm in support. Commissioners, Trask?
I am as well.
Okay, we're good to go.
Thank you.
Um, so are you okay with this coming out of, uh, ending fund balance? Because we didn't budget for this in twenty twenty-one or? How would you like to see that done?
Frank, uh, do we have funds in particular we can? I have no, no problem with, this is just me speaking personally. I have no problem with this being a special, uh, uh, one-time.
Coming out of ending fund balance?
Yeah, it doesn't bother me now, but I'm just talking for myself. Is there an issue that you see with any of that? Is there another fund that should be coming out of?
No. Ending fund balance would work.
Commissioner Shooter, are you comfortable?
Yeah, I think you, yeah.
Commissioner Trask?
Yep.
Cheryl, that's what we'll do. So when you put it in, uh, uh, put it in with, with it coming out of any fund balance.
Okay, I just want to clarify there because it'd have to come out of a budget still. So would it not be best that it comes out of the sheriff's budget and we could amend that at the next budget hearing? That way it'll track correctly.
I'm comfortable.
Yeah, it's fine. Whatever the simplest way to let them move forward is, but keep things straight in our books is.
Okay, yeah, they should have capacity now to bear, to pay for it, knowing that they'll get the money when Jen does the next budget hearing.
Okay.
Cheryl, are you comfortable with that?
Yes, we're going to have a, an internal conversation about, uh, the twenty twenty-one budget midweek this week. So we may have some other questions going forward, but I think we're fine for now.
You know, it's funny, she's sitting back there in that room all by herself. I feel like I have to yell to talk to her.
I believe in social distancing.
I can tell. Okay, what else you guys got?
Uh, that's all I have.
Commissioners, do you have anything for the Sheriff's Department?
I'm just like, I know that we're doing, uh, I think that they're doing a, a great job and we appreciate them.
Yep, we appreciate you. Thank you, Sheriff's Department. Have a beautiful day.
You too.
All right. Next up, Jim, are you on here? There he is, Jim Mattson. Uh, we're moving into juvenile court.
Good morning, Commissioners. How are you?
Good.
Jim?
Good. I've got, uh, three different inter-agency agreements, uh, with the administrative office of the courts. Two of them for the juvenile department and one for, uh, Superior Court. Uh, first one I'll talk about is our volunteer guardian ad litem program. And this is a, an agreement, uh, contract that we've had for many years, uh, that helps, uh, support our volunteer guardian ad items that we have. Uh, these monies, uh, help, uh, pay for staff time to go out and recruit, screen, train, uh, different volunteer guardian ad items, uh, who, uh, advocate for, uh, children in, uh, dependency actions. And so, uh, this contract is, uh, for seventy thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars. And, um, I just asked that you, uh, put it on the, uh, regular agenda and approve it.
I'm supportive.
Yep.
Okay, great. Uh, the second one is for our BECA programs and that's for our, uh, non-offender, uh, youth, uh, truancy at risk and, and child in need of services. And so, uh, this, uh, contract is for sixty-three thousand, uh, and forty-two dollars, which is a, uh, the exact same amount that it was for last year. And AOC is really, um, kind of looking at this last year as kind of a lost year because, uh, the dollar amounts that we get on this is based off of, uh, petition filings. And most of those petitions are truancy and because of the pandemic, uh, truancy's been a, a, a little different this last year. And so, uh, it's the same amount that we got before. Uh, but one thing that I did want to bring up, um, which is a, uh, a really a fantastic change is that, uh, historically, um, we've used these funds, uh, we split with other departments, uh, public defense, uh, the Superior Court, uh, Juvenile Court and, um, uh, Prosecutor's Office. Uh, and it's meant to help with the processing of the petitions when they come in. Um, because this is supposed to be a, a real parent-led, uh, process. And, uh, the change, uh, that happened in the legislature is that they allowed for the, uh, to assist with the processing of the petition, but, uh, also some case management work, uh, as well. And so what that allows us to do is, uh, utilize, uh, some of the programs that we have in the juvenile department, uh, with some of our local resources and, and actually pay for, uh, uh, some services which we have not been able to, to use these monies for before. And so, um, we're really excited about that. And so really what that means is, um, you know, if we've got a, a real, uh, particularly difficult case uh, with some family turmoil, uh, we would be able to, uh, maybe pay for a pace, uh, uh, for one of these cases to go see uh, functional family therapy or something like that. And so we're really excited about that. Um, and so with this one, uh, another one that I just asked that you put on your regular agenda and approve.
Oh, you're muted.
I see one head nod. Commissioner Shooter, are you supportive?
I am.
Okay, you have three.
Great. Uh, well, the last one is, uh, for the Superior Court and that is the, uh, agreement for, uh, really is the Uniform Guardianship Act. And, uh, what it does, it's very narrow, uh, scope. It, uh, gives the county, uh, the ability, uh, to reimburse up to ninety-five thousand and two dollars for, uh, court-appointed, um, attorney for the parent or a court visitor. And so these are, uh, pretty spes- uh, specific instances where, uh, the court, uh, has to appoint an, an attorney for a parent in a, in a minor guardianship, uh, or it allows for a court visitor. And the attorneys would be appointed out of the Office of Public Defense and the court visitor, uh, would be one of the juvenile court staff. And so, uh, really what that does is the court visitors, visitor allows for, uh, the court to get, uh, a little bit more information. And a report that's written to, uh, to the court to, to give them more information on how to decide on the case. So, uh, and, uh, on this last one, and again, I ask that you put it on the regular agenda and, uh, approve it.
I see one head nod, Commissioner Shooter. Okay, you have three again. I have a question for you though, just to keep track in my own mind when we're talking about extra staff and things like that. Uh, is there any administrative, uh, aspect of this that we're keeping in the budget? Administrative cost percentages or anything on these grants that, that we are utilizing internally?
So it depends on, you know, we've got several different grants. It depends on the grant. Some grants do not allow for any kind of administrative costs. Uh, this last one for the UGA that I was talking about is solely for the appointment of, uh, uh, either counsel for a parent or a court visitor. And there's no, uh, ability to do that. On other ones, we do have the ability to do, um, some administrative costs. And, um, uh, usually it's like up to fifteen percent, um, of the cost of, of the grant. And so, uh, we utilize that on, on several of our, our grants to help pay for, um, usually it's our accounting tax time, um, uh, where she does, uh, tracking and, and filing of uh, of like the A-nineteens and, and whatnot.
I was just keeping track in my head because we're talking a couple hundred thousand dollars of grant money coming.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
That's up for future.
It sure does. It sure does.
Uh, any questions or anything else for Jim? Jim, you have anything else for us?
Nope, I think that's it. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, guys. Thank you very much. All right, next up is, uh, Economic Development Council, Jennifer. Jennifer Barry, there she is. Hi, welcome.
I just wanted to get.
Oh, you're frozen, Jennifer. You're still frozen if you can hear us. You're still frozen if you can hear us.
So here, here we are.
Jennifer, we lost you. You you just came back. So go ahead.
I'll talk fast and I won't move. We'll see if that does it. Okay, um, just wanted to get back into the groove of monthly updates with you during your briefing. So thank you for getting us in on the schedule. Wanted to, um, let you know that I reached out with Diane and, um, and working with two additional entities, the Port of Allen and Belfair Water to submit directly to you. They want to get a project on the SEDS list. Um, I will make sure that they have been included in the previous updates when we do it in March. But I'll make sure to follow up with them when we start to do the next process. But we don't do it very often, those projects. I've got the form from Diane to submit directly to you guys so that you'll have the opportunity to review those projects and be able to add those to the SEDS list as they come forward. So you'll start to see those, um, in the next few weeks being submitted to you. I am working with two other entities on projects that they've had come up since our last update that could potentially go onto the SEDS list as well. So I don't know if those are going to hit before our update, the EDC's update, or if it's going to be a submit to you guys directly as well. But I think, I think the push is understanding that there's some infrastructure dollars and understanding finally that that SEDS list is infrastructure projects. So, um, being able to utilize that and to, um, potentially promote their their project and and how it can benefit the community. So you'll see, you'll see a couple of those projects start to come forward to you.
I appreciate you holding their hands and working them through this. It's also an educational process for all of them to learn how this works and and how they're supposed to do it. So thank you for that.
Absolutely. I'm definitely happy to help and it segues into the conversation that I just wanted to give you a quick update on the and Randy, you can help me out here. I think it was about four or five years ago that the Economic Development District, um, the entities that were involved in that decided to do a reorganization of it. Kind of blew up the the structure that was there with the intent of getting it back on track and moving forward and and re redoing that. So the work for the renewing of that Economic Development District through the EDA is moving forward. Um, we're at a point right now that the EDA has requested that all of the EDCs that are involved in that pull together an MOU. We're in the process of of doing that with the with the counties that are going to be done or that are going to be included in that to submit to the EDA so that they can approve us moving forward with the application to renew the Economic Development District, the Columbia Pacific Economic Development District. So not really much of an update, just an update to say we are moving forward. Part of the deliverable for that is to bring back that more robust SEDS uh, process as a whole. The project list, um, you guys definitely had the foresight to be able to want to continue that. There are counties right now that are struggling to do infrastructure dollar projects because they did not continue to maintain at a minimum the project list like you guys did. So thank you for that, but it will also bring back that more robust look at what the what the counties in that district are doing and how they're working together for the region that that EDD is in. So I'll keep you updated as that moves forward. I know that there's definitely going to be, um, a conversation on the representative for that. I know that EDCs will all have a position. They are talking structure of it. It's not going to be done by population. It's going to be an equal representation from each of the counties that are that are going to be represented. So I'll keep you updated as that moves forward. Um, wanted to let you know that we have definitely done a lot of business visits. Um, after after this latest mask mandate and and changes that we're seeing with those businesses. I know that we're working with the county to get us under contract for those small business grants. I think we're going to see a lot of businesses that are going to really be able to benefit from that support. So thank you for that. Um, in those business visits, we've gotten some really great feedback. And and really, it's, it's a thank you to you guys and the different partnerships that we have because we haven't lost as many businesses as our surrounding counties. And it really is because everybody came together and has and have really focused in on where that help can be. And we've left ego out of it. It's all about really supporting that business and moving forward with that being the goal. Um, Karen did a tour up in Hood Sport. And, um, just them being able to say thank you for helping with the Department of Agriculture grants. Ones they didn't think were there, but but hearing different voices from different people saying, no, you've got to at least try for these these funds, try and get as much support as you can, really has enabled most of our businesses to come forward, still impacted, but they're still moving forward. They still want to move forward and are very appreciative of the support. We are going to start to see some impacts from supply shortages and from those mask mandates. So how how that those two things are going to coincide? The supply shortages, you're already seeing. We have, um, businesses that aren't able to find, um, fully stocked products in order to be able to sell. That's, that's a little bit more of a national global issue, um, and we're supporting however we can. Any thoughts that you guys have on that? It's great, but it really is, it boils down to, um, that that transportation is a big one, truck drivers, worker, dock workers being able to offload product um, and manufacturer workforce shortages that they're seeing. So, um, helping our businesses that have that on our end, uh, definitely. But on a, on a national scale, you're going to start to see, um, product limiting and prices rising on the products that they are going to get. So just keep in mind, um, that as we move forward. Um, and just kind of, kind of a quick update on the recruitment side of it. It's interesting because we're definitely seeing a lot of interest in expansion. Um, we've had three of our local businesses reach out and work with that or start to work with us on potential expansion opportunities for them to stay here in Mason County, um, but definitely needing to get into a different space or a larger area. So we are going to start doing some, um, increased web updates, um, really push out that properties section that we have to our our landowners, to our people that have actual properties to market. On the work side for us, we are looking at utility capacity for the available lands that we have. So I am working to bring some of those conversations together. We have some really great properties that are zoned correctly, that are large parcels. Um, we had two manufacturers this last month, um, that are looking for two hundred to three hundred acres, flat rectangle, um, industrially zoned, but their utility requirements are much greater than what we have. So working with the different utility providers, what do they need? The different entities that might be part of that negotiation to get the infrastructure there in order to make those properties actually marketable and utilized. Um, and that's kind of it in a nutshell. We, we're still moving forward with hotel development. We have some retail developers that are looking at Belfair specifically. So we're, we're looking at, um, submitting different properties. They are looking for frontage on Highway Three, so really kind of pulling together what that that kind of base of properties looks like. Um, they reached out to us specifically, um, wanting to talk with landowners that maybe didn't have anything marketed. So we're doing that, that reach out to landowners that aren't necessarily marketing that they're interested in selling, but that are interested in selling. So, um, I'll definitely be picking your brain, Randy, and, um, the different contexts that we have up in the North End to find some of those land. Some of them, we already know, they've already reached out and said, you know, if you've got anybody, just let us know. We're not, we're not marketing it. We don't take a commission off of that. It really is about connecting, um, those businesses to to the landowners. So that's kind of us in a nutshell. Um, nothing left out of left field for you guys. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Commissioners, any questions? Sharon, you're muted. But she don't have any anyway. All right. Uh, no, thank you very much, Jennifer. We appreciate you coming in.
Sure thing. Thank you, guys.
Have a great day.
You, too.
All right, next up, we're going to go ahead and move into, uh, an executive session, uh, to talk about real estate. It is.
Commissioner, before we do that, I just, if Frank's on, I did have a question for Frank.
Frank?
Yes.
Hey, Frank, um, can you just give us a quick update on where we're at with, um, getting contracts out to the, uh, ARPA recipients that we approved a few weeks ago?
Sure, we're working on contracts for the, um, covering the arrearsages and the business grant contracts for EDC. And then we're moving into this week, the contract for the uh, PUD three and PUD one and, um, Hood Canal capital purchases. Those would be the million five, um, the specific ones for Hood Canal to do broadband expansion and, um, one more, and I don't recall off the top of my head, sorry. Um, and the PUD one water system and the Belfair water system.
So you anticipate those this week? Is that what you're saying?
I'm anticipating those the end of this week.
Okay. Thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that those contracts were forwarded to, um, Commerce. And they said that they were good to go.
Correct.
Okay.
Thanks. Any further commissioner discussion? All right, we're going to go ahead and we're going to go into a an executive session in regarding, uh, real estate, RCW four two point three zero point one one zero, uh, number one C. Uh, I'm expecting this to run. What do you think, guys? About fifteen minutes?
Probably, yeah.
Fifteen minutes. We do not expect any action afterwards, but we will come back and, uh, we will adjourn uh, at that point. So with that being said, uh, I will see you all in the executive session. We will return at, uh, um, we'll say twelve oh five.